Ah, you know, he's the one that told me about this meeting. I figured he would be on here already. Um, I can't say though, I'm not in the office.
Can't hear you. Sorry. I, I missed that. Can you, is Miguel joining us?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have my volume up.
Oh yeah, sorry. No, um, he's the one that told me about this meeting, so I figured he would be on this. Can't say where he is though.
Okay, let me text him real fast. Okay, there he is. Alright, so thanks everyone for giving us a couple of minutes for everybody to get here. Uh, we have kind of a short work session agenda today, so we'd like to chat through surveys. And mapping with the assessor's office, and then we'd like to talk through some budget information and budget projects, and then talk about some of the CARES funding with the city. Today, so with that, we'll go ahead and get started, and I think that Paul is here as well. Yep. Okay, so our assessor's office has talked about the need for mapping and surveying. So Miguel, if you want to kind of talk to us about your need, so that we can understand what the need is and, and how we can accommodate, that'd be great.
So historically, we've had a mapper and a surveyor in Lake County, and, and in recent history under the last assessor's office administration, they were housed underneath his budget, or they were departments underneath the assessor's office. Um, I've been a long time advocate for a standalone mapping department. We had a contractor for a short time, Ally Lowe, some of you might have remembered. She was hired over from the mapper at that time, Chad Malir, who was a full-time mapper for, for Lake County and a surveyor as well. So statutorily, we can have a, a surveyor be elected. Also, we can appoint a surveyor, and, and what's happening now is we're running into more lot line disputes, particularly with fences recently, three in the last week, calls coming my way. And it's not something that we do here at the assessor's office. You know, the, the way to correct any question about location is through a survey. And ideally, I'd like to see a survey required with new construction, new residential construction. It is one of the only ways that we can correct our map that's relied upon heavily for, for many things. But it's only designed to be an appraisal tool and an ownership display. It's not intended to be verification of location, which is only a survey. And so if, if we do get required and recorded surveys, we're then able to perfect the map and to better rely on the map for accuracy. So if there's any questions, I'm welcome to take any questions.
Paul, do you have any, any questions on how that communicates from the land use side to the assessor side?
I, I personally would love to have what Miguel wants to have, which is, which I guess would be a boundary survey of every single building permit we take in. Is that right, Miguel?
That would be our only way to perfect the map in order to better rely on it, even though it's never going to be a replacement for a survey. But as, you know, we are in tight proximity, particularly in the city. And when somebody wants to put a fence, like the last three people who I've had calls with and, and shared those messages with you, there's really no way to verify who owns what side of said fence. They can look at an old recorded plaque, but unless they get a new boundary survey and are willing to make an agreement between themselves. And that's not, you know, that's something that we're just running into. But if we can have better accuracy on our map, it'll serve everybody well that relies on it. You know, the insurers, the other appraisers, developers. So I think requiring a survey would be prudent, especially as we rely on the map more and more. And, and we are absent a county surveyor, and we're absent a county mapper. Although Bryce has recently finished his GIS certificate at CMC, and he's taking on a large load of our internal mapping. And so we're able to move away from the vendor we've used with Northline GIS.
Congratulations, Bryce. We now have a county mapper, right?
Oh, I wouldn't say I'm the county mapper, but I'm happy to help out as much as I can. There's, there's just a lot of need, you know, I've been looking through a lot of the data since I kind of discovered a big data trove of everything that the previous mappers had done up to about 2017, when we got rid of that role. And it's really just amazing the data we have on all sorts of things that aren't even assessor related, you know, like, the other day, actually yesterday, I was looking up for Brad Palmer, the road data. We have thorough road data in a GIS format. It would just take someone to display that correctly, and then it's all old now, you know, it's three years old, the data, so. There's a lot of need for it. I think we're doing the best we can right now. We're doing the bare minimum because we're statutorily obligated to update our assessor's map. But I really do think there's a big need for expanded mapping, you know, your department could use it. Emergency services, you know, my dream is to make a fully interactive permitting map, so we have every permit and its status displayed in real time. Things like that, but yeah, no, I'm, I wouldn't say I'm a county mapper, but happy to help out and excited about it.
I want you to be the county mapper. Okay, do I get to say that?
Hey Miguel, this is Greg. I have a question for you. You know, right now in, in real estate transactions, improvement location certificates are, are acceptable for, for real estate title work. Where would you draw the line between needing a survey and taking an ILC that's based on a, on an existing survey?
Um, those would be two different types of documents. So the ILC is a certificate certifying the location of the improvement within the boundary. The other is actually a certificate of the boundary. And the boundary is what is most critical, especially in development. Because how else can you then know your setbacks or enforce setback requirements? Or even know that you're building on the correct piece of property? And so that's why I think it's critical that we're requiring building in, in tight quarters as, as we are in the city. And even in West Park, I've had a couple of the calls come from West Park. They were referring to their improvement location certificate, which is, which is more a certificate of the location of the property within the boundary, not the boundary itself.
So then would both be required in that case?
Um, I think the boundary survey is what's critical again for knowing what the setbacks are and if the setback requirements are being fulfilled. I, I, the most recent call I had was somebody who, who through the building process knew it wasn't a requirement and was doing a site plan, which, which is required, but, but was told that he needed a survey for the septic because of setback issues between distances of wells, distances of residences from leach fields. And so we're fielding more and more of those calls and, and wanting, people wanting to use our map. But the locational accuracy is not there, and it's not what it was intended for. So the only true proof of location is a license, state licensed surveyor's survey. And if it's recorded, we can then correct, Bryce can now correct our maps accordingly. And, and if we have that process in place, we can have better information, you know, in the future. But we have, I think we have to start with the requirement.
I, I want to apologize especially to Miguel. I am sorry I had to take that phone call. So I have been speaking to Miguel and Paul about this kind of thing. So I understand, I believe I understand all the justification or the case built for that. I just was wondering if you could reiterate the specific ask? And also, I had some, some thoughts on moving forward, you know, if, if we weren't, you know, what other steps we could take if we do not make this a requirement, you know, could we at least have in the application for building? And I know we don't have, you don't need an application to put up a fence, or a permit rather, to put up a fence, say, but, uh, you know, on, on the literature that we have, can we suggest that, you know, it's a good idea? Or at least when you put out your, your notification to your neighbors within 200 feet or whatever the requirement and threshold is, you know, might we include in that letter, hey, if you have a survey of adjacent property owners, would you share that with us? Cause that maybe could help inform some of those boundaries if a survey might not be required. So can you please re- reiterate the specific ask, Miguel? Without, without, because I understand the case. I apologize.
And was I able to answer your question first, Greg?
Mine, yes. I think I just, oh, go ahead, Greg.
Oh yeah, he definitely answered my question. Thank you.
Um, so the requirement, I think, and this is probably more, you know, Paul's going to have some input on this, I think the requirement in my mind would just be for residential new construction. Developers typically always get a survey themselves and have it recorded for many reasons. But requiring the individual, single-family construction project to have a survey, I think is, is a, a great start. And other things definitely wouldn't require a survey. There's many things that don't require permits. So I think that we wouldn't worry or focus on those things. But if we were to start from this point forward, requiring surveys for new construction, new residential construction, and have that be recorded, then we could build a better data set that we could better rely upon for all the industries that use it.
Is, um...
Oh, I'm sorry. To Miguel's point, I'd like to, to say, you know, a few years, a couple of years ago, we had some surveying done on some city streets, and the results of that are truly scary. The encroachments are unbelievable and, and historic. I mean, they, some of these encroachments have existed for a hundred years. So I'm not necessarily disagreeing with, with the need for a survey, but for most existing lots in Leadville, it's a nightmare.
Yeah, that's, I agree there. But it's, I think it's going to have to be kind of from this point forward and, and in an effort to perfect the data and hope for the best and let those individual disputes usually filter or work themselves out through court unless the owners themselves can come to an agreement. But we're seeing it more and more as we grow as a community, and people are doing more ADUs and building, you know, larger footprints on their, on their lots. So it's, it's an issue that continues to, to rise, particularly with the neighbors that have been there for a longer time. And if they do have a survey and it is a boundary survey, then everybody can rest assured that they know where their property begins and ends. And then we can build better, better information for public use through our maps.
Bryce, is, oh, is there a, is there a distinguishable? Well, I think, okay, I'm sorry. On these, the parcel survey or tax parcel viewer on the website, there is, are surveys attached now? Forgive me, I cannot remember. And is it helpful, might it be helpful to have one of those layers? Or have you thought about kind of adding that to the legend or identifiable features of the mapping that we have?
So you're saying like actually map the survey boundaries and distinguish them from the regular boundaries we have?
No, I know that's the ultimate goal, and that's incredibly time consuming. All I'm saying is, you know, distinguish, say in colors, which of your neighbors have a recorded boundary survey and which might not? And otherwise, I think you need to go, and you can search that, correct, through the title history?
Yeah, you could search that through the title history for sure, and that would be kind of where you'd have to go, is you'd have to work on attaching that data to the accounts. Now, a lot of that is already done because we do attach kind of recorded documents, surveys, deeds and things to the accounts. So I could look into presenting that, you know, possibly just kind of highlighting every account that does have a survey on file in our system, maybe? Would that be a good place to start? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, that might give us, you know, some more information and/or just information to go on should we run into some of these problems and possibly be able to resolve them with an adjacent property survey.
Yeah, I'm just thinking through the logistics of that. I think it's definitely possible. It's just going to be a little bit intensive to separate out those recorded documents that are surveys versus deeds versus everything else.
Oh, oh, okay.
There's probably some sorting that's already been done, but it's just, you know, it's going to take some time invested to get that accurate.
Yeah, I see. No, just, just a thought. Thanks, Bryce.
I think that Sarah potentially, and I'm not sure, but we could ask the clerk and recorder if they can do a search by document type and then just list, uh, you know, all the reception and booking page numbers in a, in a print list of all surveys that are known, and it would definitely make a list of them.
Yeah, and it'd be pretty easy to turn that list into data we could use on GIS if, if that was the case.
Okay.
There are a lot of surveys that I think that aren't getting incorporated into the GIS. Is that right, Miguel or Bryce or both?
Uh, you know, I, I don't doubt it because we've had kind of some trouble with our third-party vendor just on response time, and they're just not as familiar with the way things work in our county. And so I've noticed a big delay there, which was part of the reason I wanted to take over our mapping, was to be able to cut that out. And so I know I helped you out with the Zachary plot the other day. Anyways, we're just going to try to address them as they come up from now on. But yeah, I don't, I don't think they've been addressed, you know, urgently in the last three years.
Yeah, so there are, uh, because I know surveyors in certain circumstances are required to record a, a survey of a parcel or of several parcels. You guys might know better whether or what kind of survey that is, but I also know that there's a lot of surveying that's going on that isn't required by statute to be recorded. But it gets recorded anyway, and you aren't necessarily, the, the assessor's office isn't necessarily being notified of that. Is that, would that be a correct, correct statement?
Um, yeah, if it's not recorded, we wouldn't have access to it. So through its recordation is, is where we are able to access it and then use that information to correct the map. But like you, like you mentioned, there, there are things that haven't been processed there. Some of them in state wildlife areas, different annexations, C dot, C dot things that have been recorded. And, and part of that was, you know, historically, under the last administration, we did have a full-time surveyor and a full-time mapper. And currently, we're operating without a full-time surveyor or a full-time mapper, and...
No, I, I know all of, all of, and I, the, the question was, if it gets recorded, if a map gets recorded, do you hear about it?
Um, we search for it and we do then send it to our mapper. Now we're cutting them out of the loop and, and now Bryce is taking on that duty. So our turn time is, is very fast. I don't know if you're able to look at something more recent, but again, like kind of Bryce mentioned, from this point forward, we do have a better ability and a faster turn time to do those corrections based off recorded surveys.
I know also that Road and Bridge accepts a lot of surveys that are required to be recorded with at least Road and Bridge. So that's another place to, to check in. And Bryce, when you get a number of, let's, let's say we have 11,000 parcels? Yes?
Yeah, roughly just over 10.
Okay, just over 10,000 parcels. If you get every parcel to be recorded, surveyed and recorded, would you be able to rubber band all the rest?
Yes, I mean, possibly. That would be, that'd be quite an undertaking though. You know, I know it took Chad, our current parcel, which, our current parcel data, which is the best we have, took him quite a while to make, you know, with that many parcels, I, I... The answer is yes, it could happen. I think when we get pictometry, that's going to help us a lot because we're going to have control data too.
Yes.
And, and that reference data, the control points, is going to make all of this easier. It's going to make it easier to correct the information we have. It's going to make it easier to input new information as we get it.
Okay, so pictometry, a lot of this would actually be greatly improved by pictometry. Is that correct?
Uh, you know, it's not going to be a replacement for a survey, but it's definitely going to help us be more accurate.
I think it'll, it'll get us within a few feet of correctness, is, if not better. Would you not say that's the case?
Yeah, I mean, depending for sure. I can't speak for certain because I haven't seen it yet, but I think it'll help a lot. My main concern, Paul, is when I think about these third acre lots in Panarc. I think that's going to be, continue to be a big issue of ours if we don't have really precise surveys done. Because, you know, the SEPEx might help us out with that few feet of variation and play it safe. But those septic lines a lot of times go right up to the property boundary if I'm not mistaken. And I just know it's going, going to be a continuing problem for us if we don't have more accurate information. And if we don't require, I think we should require new surveys, especially for areas like that where we already have a history of encroachment.
Well, my, my problem with that, I'm sorry, Sarah, I don't mean to step on you, but I, I do have to say that I would love to have a survey with every single lot that we take. But the result of that would be a tripling of the building permit cost of the time it takes. Surveyors just are not available, and we're getting slammed with building permits right now. And if we had to go around and, and tell them that they need to bring us in a survey, they may not get it till the end of the summer, number one. And number two, depending on the kind of survey that we need, we're talking about a couple of thousand dollars per parcel. So I don't know if, as much as I would love to have it, I'm saying I'd have to protect our property owners here in, in the expense of building a house?
I, I think we're already giving them quite a big break by, you know, we value it at $110 a square foot when we know you can't build for under 200. I mean, they're already getting a big break on the permitting costs. And, you know, there's lots of onerous requirements to building a house. And so I just think this is one more cost that makes it more official, and it will really end up reducing a lot of issues in the long run and a lot of losses.
I've, I mean, I see Chris Floyd's comment in there, and I have to tend to agree with Bryce. I've owned three houses, including the one that I'm in now. And I've, there's not been a house that I haven't had a property boundary issue or some illegal build of my neighbor on. And, and I guess that's just my personal experience, and I think that that's... Sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off. That's okay, that's okay. Would it not protect home, protect the home, potential homeowner in the long run by requiring that upfront?
No, and I say that because generally, as example that she had just given us, that kind of thing goes on all the time, all over the world. And, and it has, and it's really a civil matter. I mean, it's, I doubt very much it's something the county really to get itself involved in just to be able to protect, reduce the number of civil matters. So I build a fence on my property line. I didn't get the property line surveyed. I built it a half a foot to several feet onto Sarah's land. Well, Sarah's got to talk to me about moving it. And I got to talk to her about how do you know it's not on the line, you know, and it goes back and forth like that. But where does the county get involved in doing that? So I, I again would have to say that it, it's, I, like I said, I would love to have a perfect survey. I would love to be able to be assured that our, our tax map is accurate. I already know it's not, and I don't rely on it for, for that kind of a purpose. And, but I would love to be able to rely on it. I just think requiring a survey with every building permit, residential building permit, is going to be onerous on the individual property owners. And I think it might have the effect, potential effect of reducing development. Because if somebody can't get a building permit for a year or, or more after they, they try to submit because they can't get a survey, or they find that the survey is, is an additional expense that they weren't anticipating, I think that that's going to have a chilling effect.
So my, my question then, uh, to you, Miguel, is do you get questions on changes being made to properties currently where there's an existing structure? And what's the remedy for that, I guess?
Um, say again?
So do you get calls currently about like a fence line or a lot line with an existing structure on a property, like an existing residential structure on a property?
Yeah, definitely increasing, you know, more and more with every new application, with every new construction project that happens next door to somebody on a vacant lot. And I guess the question, if we don't have a survey, why, why then do we have setback requirements? Because there's no way to actually determine that you're meeting the setback if you don't know where the boundary line is. We're running into a lot of problems I hear with septic tanks. And, and my understanding from talking to the applicants is that they're being required to have a survey in the instance that they're having a septic tank. And I'm not sure if that's a requirement currently through health with Jackie. But if it is a requirement with her, or, or I would like to hear her input on the need for a survey, because I know many times she has a hard time locating those, even the properties that have septics in place that were not permitted, things of that nature. Pictometry will also help us identify those. But, um, you know, there's many other needs for a survey, but, you know, one of those basic needs is knowing your lot line. And you don't have future fence issues if you already started by requiring surveys. Like Paul said, he would love to have them. Well, I think we could start now. If cost to the applicant is a concern, I'm not quite sure where we are regionally as far as the cost to build. But it would be good to look at it through, through that lens to see if, if we are truly being cost prohibitive, or if it's just the cost of doing business.
Paul, do you have an idea of what, um, what our building permit costs are comparatively to our regional partners?
Regional partners, you mean like surrounding counties?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think that they're probably on par. I think Miguel's or Bryce's estimation that it costs $200 a square foot, I think is very conservative. I think it regularly is costing closer to $300 a square foot. And I, I know of contractors that have signed contracts for $325 a square foot. And, and that has really just gone up in the last five years. But I also know that some of those costs are starting But I also know that some of those costs are starting to come down. So I think that those building permit costs are start, have peaked. And they may level out, peaked like this, but they, I don't think they're going to rise much more because there's no room for them to rise that much more. Is that the nature of the question that you've got, Kayla?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, to ask about that a little bit. So Bryce and Miguel, when we're talking about surveys and mapping, are you seeing us adding a full-time staff person to assist with mapping or surveying? Or what would you, what would you say is the current workload or need for that position?
I mean, just speaking personally, I'm very interested in the mapping. I love it. It's a new skill for me. But it's quickly becoming something I can't really handle the workload on, especially if we're going to talk about correcting things that have happened before. I'm, I think there should be a full-time mapper there in the past, you know? I think there's a huge need.
I think-
All right, Bryce, we kind of lost you in the middle of that a little bit.
I'm sorry, my cell phone service is bad. I was just saying that, you know, we've had a county mapper full-time in the past and just looking through the data that they've been able to leave me, which hasn't been updated for three years, it's pretty incredible. And the things I'm able to do to help out every department, I really think there's a need. There has been in the past and right now, we're just struggling to kind of get by and do what we have to do to maintain our statutory obligations. But I definitely think there's a need for a full-time.
Yeah, I, I would probably echo that, that there is a need for a full-time skilled certified mapper. And probably a GIS analyst, actually, because there's, there's two sides to digital mapping. There's the actual map and then there's the data that's associated with that map, which are two different huge issues. And in fact, the, the picture of the map is the, the smallest part of a GIS. So, and, and to all of us, it's, that, that use it, it's, appears to be the biggest part. So I would have to say, yeah, we maybe could use two people full-time to operate this. I would love to be able to indicate on, on every parcel, what subdivision that is, what kind of a conditional use permit have they gotten, have they gotten? When was the parcel rezoned? That information just isn't available in, in our system, but it is available in, in systems that have been around for 20 years.
I definitely am in favor of a, of a standalone mapping department to better fill the need of all departments. Having us fill that need is, is really detracts from our main task of valuing all property and going through the protest procedure, presenting the tax roll and notice and doing the abstract and certification. Those, those are tough orders to fill. And I know that we leave a lot of needs left unmet because we're focused on valuation only. With a mapper that could take concerns from Road and Bridge, future developers, city needs, other, you know, Build a Generation, a lot of other people have needs to use maps and our data to demonstrate and tell their story better. I think that if we do have a standalone mapping department, everybody's going to be better served rather than relying on our map that is primarily focused on valuation and ownership.
Miguel, can you talk through the effects that that has on our evaluation process with that information?
The mapping tools that we're going to acquire are going to help us with discovery, new growth, discovery for people that have built things and, and not had them permitted, additions to decks, additions of rooms, things of that nature. With pictometry, we're going to be able to measure those, even if we don't have access to the property and add that value to the tax base. I had sent a report around, I think, to the commissioners showing what our recent new growth valuation increase was. And it's going to be another tool to help, probably the best tool we can have to help us in that discovery mission.
Okay, great, thanks. Sarah, Commissioner Glenn, what are your guys' thoughts on, on this? And, and what's, I guess what's our, also, what's our timeframe, Paul, Miguel, Bryce?
So I, I, I'm not sure, and I apologize again for missing it. What was the specific ask? If somebody could repeat that, please.
I think Miguel's asking for us to have a contract with a surveyor or have a surveyor on staff and a mapper on staff. Would that be correct, Miguel?
The original, the original conversation and the original ask was about requiring surveys for new residential construction. And so that, that was one thing that we kind of moved past and didn't have consensus on. Or we heard, we heard a lot about it. But that's something that I still feel like is a, is a good requirement to put in place. And I, I understand that there was a cost concern mentioned, the cost to the applicant, but I'm not quite sure if, if it is cost prohibitive when we consider the alternative build sites in our region. So it would be good to have that information. But as far as preventing a lot of lost administrative time and legal battles, having that survey in place from the start, when they do build the new house, prevents a lot of those future issues when they do have neighbors building next door to them on a vacant lot. The boundary line disputes are, are coming fast and furious. And I'm not sure where to direct those exactly. Since we're the only people with a map, I think it tends to all filter towards us. But we're appraisers, we're only appraisers.
I think, I think the ask, Sarah, is we need a separate mapping department. Wouldn't you say, Miguel?
Yes, I've advocated for that for a very long time. And I think there's potentially some cost savings there because I know many departments are using their own map services, search and rescue, Road and Bridge, myself, other people, contract mapping. And so if we can consolidate that and put it in-house, I think there's some cost savings there as well. And then better accuracy, better term time.
Otherwise, the ask is to require that building permits come with a, a new survey.
I would think not all permits potentially, but, uh, you know, maybe additions and definitely new construction. And I'm not sure where SEPTIC falls into that conversation. My understanding was that it was a requirement when there's a SEPTIC involved. I, I'm not sure about that, but that's what I heard from an applicant last week.
Yeah, we won't issue a building permit without a SEPTIC permit already having been issued.
And, and for the SEPTIC permit, we are requiring surveys to be done?
If, I, I think that Jackie has the authority to ask for a survey or not issue a SEPTIC permit. And that's, but I don't think, I know she doesn't ask for it on every single SEPTIC. I think it might be every, oh, fifth or seventh that she asks for a survey.
Okay.
And that's just depending upon the, the SEPTIC itself and the property, right, Paul?
That's correct.
Is there, I mean, can we hybrid and evolve any responsibilities within the assessors to address the mapping issues and then dealing with the statutory position of a surveyor? I mean, I, I know you made this presentation to us last year at one point, Miguel. That, the responsibility of that surveyor is for county purposes only? Would that apply to, you know, would we be able to provide that as a service for folks so that we did not have this consequence of delayed permitting or building time?
In the past, how that was used was mainly to verify information for county projects and for county, county, other county government entities. Also, it was sometimes used to solve some of these lot line disputes that are the, you know, fence line disputes that are a whole other subject aside from, you know, new construction permits. So that's how it had been used in the past when we had Chad Malir as the surveyor under the last Assessor's administration.
County surveyors don't have the purpose of going out and doing surveying. County surveyors are intended to be a dispute resolver, more, more than anything else. And I, I think that yes, there's getting to be more disputes about trespass, which I suggest is not a county issue.
Let's encourage the workforce to send high schoolers and folks out to get, learn new skills and become surveyors so we have better inventory of folks to draw from.
Well, same thing goes with constructors and laborers on job sites, you know?
Yeah.
That's a part of the reason the cost is going up so high is because our contractors have to pay so much in order to attract them.
Yep.
And younger people are not getting into that industry anymore.
Um, all right, thanks for some updates. Commissioner Glenn, Commissioner Muz, do you have anything else to add?
No, I mean, I wish, I wish we could, um, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, let's, let's maybe look at, well, for, I wish we could give a more solid answer or understanding of where, you know, we move from here. But I still feel like, you know, if we could get that work or that list from the clerk's office, if we could, you know, if Jackie is requiring SEPTIC and potentially, you know, there's a increased level of concern in a certain subdivision, which would result in all likelihood in a number of surveys being done. You know, we're meeting that need. If we are able to maybe understand what surveys are actually existing out there, you know, I, I think that that all can inform how best to move forward. And I do, I do like the idea of a county mapper. And I wonder, you know, if I may have also missed that. But if, if, you know, if that's something that could be added to the responsibilities of Bryce right now. And we can talk about kind of developing that as, as we work through that.
I like the idea of starting with a county mapper, especially with bringing pictometry on board. Because I think that that helps in the long run with that assessment piece and making sure that our assessments are correct. I think that'll help us a lot and help with Paul's and Ann's department as well. And I, I'm curious if it would be worthwhile for us to look at the amount of money that we should allocate statutorily to a surveyor and contract with somebody for that on an as-needed basis as, you know, disputes arise. I don't know how frequently that's utilized or what that looks like. Maybe Ann and Paul and Miguel can give us an idea on that?
Well, not, and I'm not sure, as you say, that, as Paul mentioned, that's kind of a civil matter and not necessarily ours to, to resolve. So I think, I think, yeah, I think the mapping part is very beneficial across all departments. And to just solidify that expectation or the, the ability to tap into someone like Bryce, that would be, that would be nice to kind of talk about that position, maybe.
Yeah, I think it, it would be delightful to have somebody like Bryce in that position. But this cost of Bryce being in that position is being absorbed entirely by Miguel. And, and, and what we're asking Bryce to do, at least right now, has a considerably bigger reach than just Miguel's assessment responsibilities. So I guess I would also tend to say that, that a separate department is what I think would work best, that would service the assessor's office as well as all of the other departments that need it.
Thanks for that concern, Paul, because we definitely are, you know, short on headcount. We've already let vendors go. And so we're reducing staff already from a reduced staff that we, that's been in this office historically, including a mapper and a surveyor and additional headcount. And we're, we're facing more protests and more sales and higher increases in valuation than ever. And we really can't afford to dedicate Bryce's time elsewhere. And I do admire his, you know, his ability to take on additional tasks. And he is the right person for, for probably any job. And I'm glad to have him here on my staff. And I'm sure he wouldn't mind helping somebody transition into a full-time mapping role. And I do think there's likely some cost savings there as we all kind of go our different way with our mapping needs countywide. So, you know, the faster the better that we could get a, a mapper. I think it would serve us all and save a ton of administrative time.
Yeah, I have a tendency to agree with that. And I think definitely having it as a standalone department, perhaps under the board, makes the most sense.
I think so.
Commissioner Glenn, what are your thoughts on, on the mapping and surveying?
They're great ideas. Moving forward with budget numbers being down this year, sales tax revenue being down this year, I just want to know how we're going to pay for it.
Thanks. What thoughts would you have on where to fit that in our budget?
I personally don't think there is room right now. We'll know more as we get into the fall.
Commissioner Muz, what are your thoughts?
Um, I'm just, I'm, you know, thinking what, what conversations need to just still be had to kind of develop a full-fledged proposal with HR and/or, you know, I guess am I understanding that the, some of the needs that are current could not be met with current staffing in the assessor's office? If we were to talk about, you know, appropriate delegation and, and any kind of shifting, Miguel?
I, I really have been advocating for an additional headcount. I, I really have been advocating for an additional headcount, even back when we had the TIF negotiations with the city and was promised an additional headcount there. And we continue to deal with, uh, reduced headcount, um, even since the time of Howard, but we have a huge increase in workload. Again, increases in sales, as Paul mentioned, increases in building permits. The, the permitting process, once it's done, those customers are finished. For us, it creates a lifetime customer that we have multiple statutory requirements and they have appeal rights all the way to the Supreme Court. So they're forever, forever customers for us. So we continue to add to our workload, including with the TIF requirement. And we're also cutting, um, two of our contractors currently in efforts just to kind of tighten our budget. It's already one of the smallest budgets, but I, you know, we're such a critical part of, of the county budget as far as property taxes concerned. It's hard to continue to stretch us thinner or to make cuts when we're relied upon so heavy to, you know, help fill that budgetary gap. And new growth is one of those places where we can uniquely add value every year, not just with the, reappraisal cycle every other year in the odd numbered year. So the new growth is very important. And one of the main ways of discovery is through the building permit process. But also now with pictometry, we're going to add value there and, and by the end of the year, be able to show the return of the investment and on that investment, I'm quite confident. Which does help us do more with less, but, uh, I, we do need a standalone department. I think under the direction of the commissioners makes a lot of sense. That way there's a, a better level of comfort for people sending requests that way. And you have better management over priorities. Right now it forces a lot of work that's not appraisal work onto our plate because we don't have a surveyor and we don't have a mapper. And that's stretching an already thinly stretched department even thinner to answer, um, calls that are not ours, so to speak. Um, so the administrative burden there is huge. And, and some relief there would, would be beneficial and I think allow us to do our job better. A good demonstration of, of our return, you know, was had when, when we worked through the climax issue and realized, you know, almost 1.4 million dollars in tax we were foregoing. So having all hands on deck is very critical and, and it is where some of the biggest, most important financial work can be done to benefit all departments and CMC and the school district. Uh, I think the school district was able to keep 800,000 from that correction that we made. Um, so I feel like we're critically important. We're just thinly stretched. And, um, if you were able to find room for a county mapper in the budget, that, that would be great for all departments, I believe.
Really have a tendency to agree with Miguel in the critical nature of, the work that's done in his office. You know, our budget is based on entirely off of the accuracy of the information that comes out of his office. And, um, and so I think that that's an extremely important piece to remember through this conversation. And, you know, kind of to add on to that a little bit, we'll know more from the URA board, um, and the TIF area, um, negotiations going forward. I would imagine through later into the summertime about, about the amount of money that will come back to the county or that can be withheld as an administrative fee intended to cover the cost of, of the staff person to administer that TIF taxing area. Um, so that, that is a possibility and it is written in the URA agreement. Just a thought. We, we could potentially use that, that money to fund an additional headcount, which would free Bryce up to do more mapping or fund somebody in the mapping area. Just, just a thought.
That's a great idea.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's exactly what that percentage of, uh, the amount that we should be keeping. Um, the key is getting the increment there to, to either reimburse ourselves or be able to allocate. But yeah, I, I agree.
So my proposal is we, um, go forward with, uh, looking at the, see what happens with the URA, URA board to understand what comes out of that TIF area going into 2021. And then look at making room for making this adjustment between these departments.
Um, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure that relying on the increment moves us forward necessarily. Um, but I, you know, if we, if we're looking at, like Laura's comment, if we're looking at where this might come from, maybe we can just collect the overall costs that we incur by outsourcing this and, um, start there to just move forward with, um, kind of shifting. I mean, I know there's a, a lot of projects and land use priorities, title work that would all benefit long-term projects from, um, having, you know, a better, dedicated staff mapper.
Yeah, I think, you know, understanding what that, what happens with the URA board at least will give us a timeframe for at least how long that administrative fee will be collected for the first project through the, through the TIF area. But I agree that regardless, I think we need to need to think about moving forward, at least with that mapping piece, especially with pictometry. Oh, you're muted, Sarah. Oh, okay, you're good. All good. So Miguel, Paul, Bryce, um, and what's, what's our next steps on this is just to, to look at budget? And then see where we fit it in? Yeah?
Yeah, you mentioned pictometry and we're also going to be adding some value, some taxable value there through our discovery work after we get our imagery in October for 2021. Um, and so that, there's going to be some money there as well.
Yeah, I guess that's presuming that that picture doesn't get deleted.
I think that's happening.
The pictometry is going away?
Not, not to my knowledge.
No, I'm just thinking in terms of.
I know, that's a possibility. Yep.
Nothing is off the table. But I, I think, uh, Kayla, that that's probably the best thing to do is to see if there's any money to be able to do as Miguel is asking. Otherwise, I think the only other choice that we've got is to continue to rely on Miguel to, uh, and, and what he does for his purposes. And the rest of us just hope we can adapt, which is what we've been doing for the last several years. And, and it, it does work, but it, it could be a lot better.
So Miguel and Paul, could we, could I set up a time to talk with you both and go through your budgets to kind of understand what your costs are related to mapping?
Absolutely.
Okay. Miguel, would that work for you?
Yeah, definitely. If you send me an invite, um, we'll be able to meet with you both.
Okay. So I think maybe Friday morning might be okay, but I'll connect with you guys, um, through an email after, after this, and we can pick a time to go through our budgets and take that deep dive to see where perhaps we can make some adjustments to fit this in.
Friday morning works for me.
Awesome. I'll, I'll get an invite ready and send it out.
Okeydoke.
All right. I think that's all for our mapping conversation at this point. Does anybody have any questions? No further questions from anybody on, on mapping? No? Okay. Well, thank you, um, for the productive conversation today. Really appreciate it. Um, I think our next thing that we wanted to check in with Amber on was a list of recreation projects. And, um, just talk through her prioritization on some of those. Sorry, guys. Give me just a second. I'll, uh, tell you what the list of those are.
I'm, I'm pulling, I'm trying to pull that up. Um, I don't know if Amber wants me to pull it up and share a screen. I can do that though.
Could you type them into that chat box, Sarah?
And, and not share?
Yeah, Sarah, I prefer to not share my entire email, I think. So.
I was just going to copy, um, your list in a Word document.
That's fine. Or I can put it in the chat.
Okay. Okay. Um, so let's see. Copy the projects.
Okay. And so for, for those of you that can't see in the chat box, um, we have aquatic center gas line study and replacement. Huck Finn lighting project, skate park repair, Huck Finn community park, parking lots project, facility signage or wayfinding, Sixth Street Gym floor recoat, desk so maintenance on community field, security cameras, grooming, facility audit and courthouse engineering. So Sarah and Amber, you guys want to start us, start us off on the projects and perhaps we can get a sense of what we're looking at in terms of priority moving through the remainder of 2020 and into 2021?
Yeah. I mean, I think all of these projects were budgeted for either through my department or through the BOCC. And specifically like the audit and the courthouse engineering is stuff that you, as the BOCC, had asked me to look into. So I'm really just looking for some guidance on which projects you want to proceed on, which projects you want to wait on. I think we know that we likely won't have the funds to do much of any of this next year. So I'm, I'm just needing some guidance so I can either move them forward or, or not.
Um, upon re, I mean, I would say, looking down the line, um, skate park repair, go Sixth Street Gym, maybe don't do, because we really don't know what the future of use will be throughout the year. Um, security cameras do since we, you know, that would help us in response. Through COVID especially, but you know, to, to protect and maintain the investment in, in those facilities. Grooming. We should continue. I'm not. Yeah, I don't know. Uh, the facility signage project, Amber, um, that's linked to goal funding as well.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think that's really important for us to make a decision about because Beth is going to need to spend those dollars in 2020. And we have pretty significantly changed what that project looks like based on the funding allocated by the BOCC. So if, if we're not going to move that forward and we're not going to allocate those dollars, Beth and I need to revise that project again. Um, and she needs to know that. So we can get some signs ordered probably within the next few months to, to meet her obligation to go co.
So what, can you tell us what, can you remind us what the, the final or the, yeah, final proposal currently is? And, um, you know, how might we also use this? You know, what other thoughts have you had in, you know, through, through the COVID event of a benefit from improving any signage?
You know, I think, I don't know that this project in my mind has changed in terms of COVID because I don't know that long-term we're going to be asking folks to do the things that we're currently asking them to do or not so much that we would likely want to put it on a sign because we don't know what the future looks like. So I think that they would still likely just incorporate our general rules and hours and functions and those types of things. I think the biggest key in this project is knowing that things will be in both English and Spanish, so more user-friendly for our community. Um, I'm trying to find Beth and I's last list. So give me a second. Let me share my screen with you so we can see what we're looking at. Everybody see that?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. So this is the current signage list and the way that this is built is so this column, this is running total here. That is, um, the cost of the signs that we're looking at implementing. And then this column K is secured funds. So that subtracts those as we go. So you can see right here on line 15, that's where we run out of funding to do any signage, um, if that makes sense. So these are the signs that we're looking at implementing. Um, so signage at DeGeneres because it doesn't currently have any lighter field. The sign is also, um, it's completely unreadable. Some directional signage to help get folks to Huck Finn, because they have a hard time finding that space. Um, signage for the upper and lower lots at Huck Finn, um, potentially the pump track. We wanted to discuss that with Sterling, how that might work with his project. Again, some more directional signage here, um, signage for Kitty Corral, Ice Palace, um, Skyline. Uh, and then again, there's some more directional signage here, um, because we've identified that as a pretty high need. Um, and then everything else. So these are kind of our high need facilities that are high use would meet both, you know, user needs for Beth's groups in terms of outdoor facilities, um, as well as my needs in terms of facilities that either are missing signage or their signage is unreadable. And/or the directional signage, which is, we have a lot of folks that struggle to find some of those that are a little bit tucked away or in strange spots or not on actual streets, which is a big problem at Huck Finn, particularly the, the white top skating rink. So if we remove that. So if we remove that $60,000 allocation from the BOCC that goes towards this signage project, we're looking at probably implementing about five signs total.
Is that the is there is the quantity one on each of these?
Yep, the quantity is one.
And the vehicle directional, is that wayfinding, is that multiple signs?
Yeah, so the vehicle directional, I'm sorry, I can find that as well, but that's more of like your sign that has, you know, an arrow pointing that Aquatic Center is ahead. And if you turn left, you're going to go to Huck Finn. So that's going to have information on multiple facilities depending on where they're placed. So like this in line 12 where it says sixth and front edge, it's going to direct to Aquatic Center, Community Park Field, Kendrick and Huck Finn. So depending on where they're placed is what it will direct to.
Okay. So that's multiple. Okay. What was the what was the goal? Allocation funding? Coming from goal?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head, Sarah. I, sorry, I well, so we've got 103 secured.
Oh, it says there.
Is coming from the BOCC.
Hover.
One of that is coming, no, 10 is coming from CTF.
28,000 from goal?
Um, well, I'm trying to think. So some of there is a there is a CTF fund allocation there and I can't remember if it's for 10 or 15. I'm sorry, let me look for that. So there's a 10,000 allocation there from CTF first. No, sorry, 15,000 from CTF for signage.
Okay, I'm just making some notes here. Okay, so that's. Hold on just a second here. So that's for the wayfinding. And if we decide to change that allocation, we just need to let Beth know about that, Amber. And is there a timeframe on on the wayfinding allocation?
Yeah, so Beth needs to have her funds spent by the end of 2020. We're actually about a year behind on this project, so she had to ask for an extension to get this done. And I'm happy to have that conversation with her if we change the allocation. I think something for you guys to note, though, is that we have not replaced a single sign in any single one of our parks since I started in 2011. So, you know, the signs are, you know, our signage is pretty poor and it's never been a priority. And I know that it doesn't seem important, but it really is important to the users at our parks. So I would urge you to really strongly consider before changing this allocation because it doesn't even get us halfway through the signage that we need. And I think leveraging Beth's dollars is really important. And something that we need to take care of.
Thanks for that comment, Amber. I actually agree 100%. It doesn't seem like something that's super, maybe should be a priority, but if we don't continue the maintenance and get folks, you know, make it easier or more accessible. Yeah, we we need signage, we need rules, we need cameras up probably on the facilities that we've invested in. I agree.
So I think really then from that, like wayfinding and cameras come to the surface as a priority then, correct?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the cameras continue. I mean, I think there there are safety concerns. So when we're talking about the ice rink, there's no visibility on the fire pit outside. So that's, it's a problematic area, but I think it's, you know, in terms of people like to stick things in the fireplace and melt them. And I've really urged Felicia to reduce her staff in that building to save dollars when it's slow. And so we can't have someone monitoring inside and outside at the same time. So I think it's a safety issue. I think, you know, in terms of the security cameras at Community Park, Roger has a lot of vandalism problems there. It's one of our most expensive facilities. So I think, you know, from a surveillance facility and to hopefully reduce some of that vandalism and or recover losses when we do have vandalism, I think that that's really important. So yes.
Amber, what do you think? What is the, oh, sorry?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
What what are your thoughts on kind of prioritizing the rest of the items on this list? Yeah.
So I think the Aquatic Center, that gas line study and replacement project, that's another one that if that facility is going to continue to operate, this has to happen. We do not have enough gas coming into that building to operate all of the machinery inside of the building. So even though we've made some repairs to the air handler, the air handler can't operate at the same time that both boilers are operating in addition to the water heaters and the spa boiler. So we're playing this game of are we operating, are we heating the water? Are we heating the air? Are we heating what's in the locker rooms? Or we're going to be in this place where we need to cycle the equipment. And what's really important to note here is that you know, we want to make sure that the air handler is operating at its appropriate capacity to make sure we're getting good air exchange into and out of that building, especially knowing that there's this respiratory virus that's happening. So that's more important than ever to make sure that that's operating at an appropriate capacity. It's not going to change, you know, necessarily the likelihood that someone contracts a virus from being in an indoor facility, but at least we know that we're meeting air exchange standards. And I think, you know, we've started some of that work and we might be able to get through the summer, but we know that going into the winter and fall, we are not going to be able to heat the outside air to an appropriate temperature and keep all the other items like the water heated that need to be. So we're going to be, if we don't get that project done and get some more gas flow coming into that building, we're not going to be able to keep it warm enough to even be a usable space for folks. So I think that's important. I think the ice rink lighting project, I know that this is not going to be popular with the Rec Advisory Board folks, but I think that's something that we can ask them to undertake. And if it takes a couple more years for them to set aside funds to make that happen, I think that's fine. The lighting down there is not great, but we have survived with it this long and I think we can survive with it a little bit longer. And it's something that, you know, they could consider. I mean, I do think it's an important project, but that's where a lot of this push is coming from. I think it's something that I can work with them to grant right for if it's something that they think is a really big priority. So I would say that that should probably, I would hold that before I held some of these others. The skate park repair project, I think that is one that we absolutely need to undertake. It should have probably been done two or three years ago. And I I do have some pricing on that, so I can share that with you. It's going to be a really expensive project. It's going to cost more than was budgeted for. And in addition, one of the companies is also proposing to do some general maintenance to that park, which I think is something else that the OCC should consider undertaking. We don't have the in-house expertise to do that. And I think by doing some of that general maintenance, it's going to keep us from having another big repair project in another year or two. So I think that is something that needs to happen, especially as we're going to want to continue to push people to use our outdoor facilities as much as possible. The Huck Finn and Community Park parking lots, those are something that we're using. We're using the mill. It's coming off of the avenue. And so I think that this is, or at least I think that's where it's coming from. But I think this is the time to do that project because I don't think we're going to ever want to pay to asphalt those from a plant. So Brad's plan was to lay down whatever comes up off the avenue and put some recomite on top to kind of make it a paved space. So unless you guys see that meeting with another project or another timeline, I'm not sure that there's a better time to do that than currently. Um, Sixth Street Gym floor project, I mean, we're already, you know, we're already two years out on that. It's not super expensive. And I I think as we look to reopen, we will be using that space this winter. But I think if you, if there's, you know, if we can put 3,500 in next year's budget, I think it can wait, but it is going to need to be done. So if we think that's doable in 2021, I think it can wait one more year. We are a little farther, we're trying to keep it on to your cycle. So we're a little bit further out than we should be. But not, it's not in an emergency, but I don't want to put it into an emergency point. I think the DESO maintenance is something that that was also done last summer. It's been recommended to Brad that we do it on an annual cycle. However, I think because that field is only, you know, usable six to eight months of the year, I would want to have that conversation with Brad, but I think we might be able to advocate for doing that in 2021 as well. It's also not an expensive project. It's it's only between three and five. I'd have to look up the cost from last year, but I would, if we think that's something we can accomplish in 21, I think it's probably doable to postpone for a year. And then the grooming, I think that's more of a, you know, again, I think we're going to want to advocate for people to continue to go outside. I think we've found that contracting out the grooming has been a really cost effective way to do it. We've we've thought recently at Rec Advisory Board about trying to bring that back in house, but I don't think it's going to be cost efficient when you're talking about, you know, mechanics' time and equipment and the maintenance that goes into that piece of equipment. We only spent about $16,000 this year. Last year was 18, so kind of dependent on the snow load. We're in that range.
Of total costs for the contract?
Yeah, of the contract, yeah. So I think we're, you know, that we're, you know, the cost has been manageable. I think I was asking more about that question for you all to discuss if you, if we want to, you know, historically, it's been funded through CTF dollars, contribution from the city, some fundraising. So I think that's my question to you is, does the BOCC feel like that is something they want to pay for? Do we want to try to push that back to Rec Board and have them figure out how to fund it? Not sure how sustainable it is to fund it through CTF funds. And I know that we got very minimal donations this year. Even though people are enjoying it, they, I think they don't want to pay for it. So I think that's just more about, you know, do we, how do we intend to fund that come this December so that I can have that conversation with Rec Advisory Board? And then the facility audit and the courthouse engineering, those are more like bigger picture county wide, and I would leave you guys to give guidance on if we want to hold up on those for the time being.
Thanks, Amber. I appreciate that. Would there be the opportunity for us, I guess, actually, my question is, what projects does the does the Rec Board have in place right now? And would they be amenable to assist with something like the grooming? Or can you explain maybe what they have in their ideas or plans?
Yeah, so currently there is, there is a fund balance of 279,000 in CTF funds. They have, let's see. They've got 152,000 of that allocated to a variety of projects that are either in process or will be in process. So they have they have about 130,000 allocated for the Aquatic Center and the replacements that they know are going to be coming down the road with that project building. They've got money out for goal for for the signage project. They've got about 13,000 outstanding to the Tabor Opera House from prior commitments by the BOCC. There is 15,000 allocated for the Wheelers and the Pump Track project. They've got about 20,000 allocated for lighting, which is why I would just advocate for them to put some more funds in and and do that project. And then they've got a little bit earmarked as discretionary funds. And the rest of their funds are not currently committed. Their most recent expenditures have been, they did give some, they gave 5,000 to the Nordics Ski Council to groom at the golf course this past winter. And other than the Opera House and the Aquatic Center audit, those have been their biggest expenses recently. So that the the unspent, uncommitted dollars, they're really trying to be mindful of that budget and not having a zero balance in the CTF funds. That way, if there's an emergency project or, you know, kind of trying to save some dollars for when whatever community park needs to be replaced or skate park needs new concrete or whatever. So it's not committed to anything. And so I don't know, like, they're trying to be a little bit more conservative about how they're how they're spending those dollars, but no conversations about what those might go towards specifically. You know, I think we can ask them about making a contribution to grooming and maybe reducing the county's contribution as opposed to eliminating it. I think it's
For grooming?
Yeah, for grooming. Sorry, that was a really long circular answer to Keel's question.
Okay.
I think it's just, I think they're worried about in the long run, if we pull that money from there every single year, that it's not sustainable as they commit to other projects. So.
Yeah. Um, I think that maybe we can try some of the other avenues that we've tried on grooming. I think that it's really important to continue to have that as a facility and not allow that to not be, you know, not not put it in danger of not being a winter available for winter use. So let's maybe try to kind of reach out to other groups and think about how we can incorporate that into kind of the marketing of the county.
I think there's some potential there too, to really leverage the donation piece of that facility, maybe like through the tourism panel or something to have them assist with the leveraging of of soliciting donations to people that come to utilize the Mineral Belt Trail. Essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that was a conversation we had tried to have about two years ago with them. It was not well received. And I know that they've had some board changes, so that may, it may be time to have that conversation again, but you know, I have to be honest, I had a really poor reception last time I went and it made me really not want to go back. I wasn't treated particularly well, and I think it's because I was asking them to think about using dollars in a different way than they have historically, which was not well received. They feel very strongly that their dollars should be earmarked earmarked for marketing. So we.
Well, I think the I think the definition of marketing is the problem because marketing is not only advertising, right? So.
Yeah, and I agree. I just, I think without some guidance from the BOCC there, I didn't, you know, I didn't feel like I was able to make any headway. And so I think they might need to hear from you as a board if you all think that's a priority and what that might mean for them or look like for them.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a fair, a fair thing. Okay. I think that's a fair, a fair thing. I think we could definitely reach out to them about that.
So it looks like, I have highlighted on my own list, still maybe a consensus to go would be aquatic center, gas line, skate park repair project, facility signage, security cameras, grooming. And then I think the only question mark might be that courthouse engineering. And for me, the courthouse is just this lingering thing that we just never take care of. And nobody, you know, no board ever thinks that there's money to do it. But I think, you know, I mean, I think we really have to address some of those concerns with the heating and just the inefficiencies of the heating and windows in that building for for the long-term use and for cost savings, you know, with utilities. So I, I would, because we still don't know what the complete cost of that is, correct? And the engineering would be for the heat, the heat system alone. And then have we gotten with this, this, would this include the window replacement? Because those are the two big projects, correct?
Yeah, so I think what we had talked about originally was knowing that we need to have some engineering done to replace the heating. And that's definitely tied to the windows, but I'm not sure what that looks like from that engineering perspective, how they think about that. Because I know, you know, Chris Carey's, I think, expressed to you all his concern about, you know, if we do one without the other, we might be in a still uncomfortable place in terms of temperature and regulation and how the building is set up. I think that facilities audit, you know, that was kind of intended to be more of a countywide thing. We could just make it more of a courthouse specific if that's what we feel like is the priority right now and have them just really look at this building holistically in terms of what it needs and what needs to be addressed. I'm wondering, and I only caught part of this conversation, so I apologize that this is probably going to not be helpful. But the folks that you just contracted with to do some of that due diligence work, I believe, had talked about addressing some of what might be done with the courthouse down the road. And sorry, because I only caught part of the conversation.
Yeah, it was more like a space needs
Okay.
kind of assessment and what, you know, what could be repurposed. Not necessarily, I don't think, looking into overall engineering or the condition of the building.
Okay. Merge together, but it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it may, if there's, you know, areas of the building that we wouldn't use or we would repurpose for non-office use that might not need heating, but I don't, I don't know, I wouldn't suspect that great of a change. But I guess that would be interesting in getting an engineering assessment, you know, including the jail. I wonder if their, that work could be done in phases. But it, it might just be worth getting the cost analysis of, of those needs of the courthouse. And again, for me, it was really focused on the heating and the windows piece and not necessarily a list of other things.
Would it be worthwhile to reach out to Chris Carey and ask him for a cost estimate on, on that? Because I was, I was imagining with that engineering that it would come with a replacement plan. Is that kind of what you had expected from that too, Amber?
Well, I think the engineering that Chris had talked about was specific to the heating. And so it would probably, I would assume it would come with a plan for how to replace the heating. And I think he had talked about maybe a phased approach and what that might look like. I think he, I think he had given us a ballpark last time he was here of about 100,000, but I could be making that up and would have to go back. I mean, I'm happy to go back and have that conversation with him. Again, I just, I don't remember the exact number he gave us. And I don't think we had that much earmarked for that project either. So that may be, that may answer that question for us if we don't have that much earmarked unless there's funds from somewhere else that to pull from to finish a project like that, or at least having the engineering done.
You said 100,000 for the, just the engineering piece?
I think that's what Chris had said initially. I could be completely making that up. I'd have to go back and find my notes from that meeting where he presented to you all. Which I can definitely do.
Do you have kind of a good sense of priority then, Sarah? What you feel like as a priority list?
Yeah, the, the ones kind of in green that I just went through, aquatic center, skate park, facility, security camera, grooming, and then question mark on the courthouse and the ones to postpone, Huck Finn Lighting, Huck Finn Community Park Parking Lot Projects. And I actually, I think we can talk with Public Works about that, but I don't think that this is the only time to to utilize, they're not gonna, they're not gonna use any of the current, you know, hot plants or whatever that are in town right now for the runway or CDOTs projects. So I, I don't necessarily think that that's time sensitive. And we could push that. Nor, I guess, saying that, do I think that it might even cost us that much to do. So let's just get a, kind of check in with Brad and Michael on that. Sorry, the other three to maybe postpone were that 16, Six Street Gym Floor Recote, Community Park Field Maintenance and the overall facilities audit.
Okay. I don't see Commissioner Glenn is still on with us, so maybe we can catch up with him about his thoughts in terms of priority for this year and matching that to our financial statements with what we are anticipating fully receiving in revenue kind of thing.
Yeah. Amber, does that sound like a good starting point to pursue? And Commissioner Marcela, what do you, what did you, what were your opinions? Do you have any other opinions on kind of the outline of that list?
No, I don't think so. I think for me, that kind of is in line with what my priorities would be at this point. I think some of those things like the courthouse engineering and the facility audit might be things that we could potentially earmark money for in the fund balance post-COVID, if we end up in a place where we feel like we have to cut some projects.
That courthouse piece too. And I'm not sure, you know, depending on what the ultimate decisions might be, but we could wrap something like that in certificate of participation as a needed project, if that's the direction we went on that.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can definitely, definitely think about that a little further into the year about starting that. Did you talk, did you say where you put the gas line at the aquatic center? Was that in your priority list?
A go, yeah.
Okay, that's what I had as well. Sorry, I just, I just didn't hear it. But I have that as well. I think if we're going to keep that facility open, it has to be safe to be open.
Yeah.
Okay. Amber, you feel pretty good about those, about those then? Or would you change anything in that, in those order, in that order?
No, I think that's good. And that's exactly what I needed. I mean, some of these projects I'll definitely be bringing back to you because they're gonna, you know, we'll have multiple bids associated with them, and we'll have to make some decisions about what vendor we want to use. So some of those, you'll, I will move forward with getting those prices so we can make some of those decisions. And that's, yeah, I think that's really what I needed to be able to move forward on this stuff. And like, the Six Street Gym floor is already scheduled, so I need to cancel that. So those are the kind of decisions that I needed from you all.
Awesome. Well, thank you for, for the productive conversation today. I really appreciate it. I feel like we've kind of, kind of worked through the bulk of some of that stuff today.
Yeah, the other two things, Kayla, from that email, I think, you know, the staffing. I don't know if you want to have that now, but we have some kind of outstanding staffing questions. I think the head lifeguard conversation can wait a little while, but we, I need to give my staff some guidance about whether we can offer youth skateboarding or if we're going to be able to offer aftercare for the kids that are in Rocky's Rock, because those are two vacancies that I have not advertised for, but I don't have anyone on my team to fill those currently. So I think if you and Sarah can give me some thoughts on how you want to move forward with offering or not offering those, so that I can communicate with Karen and Cisco and all the other folks that are kind of affected by those decisions, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. I think from my understanding with what's happening at Rocky's Rock, at Rocky's Rocks, it sounds like they'll have their site visit for their licensing on Friday, and they push their start date back to the end of, end of June, I believe. And so I think that through the public health, where it sounds like it's a go, they have a plan that's been approved by public health for them to offer Rocky's Rock at the end of June. So I would, I would be okay with, with moving forward with that hiring piece. I think that instituting some form of childcare through the summer is going to be critical for our economic recovery.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy with that. I think that's fair. As long as, I mean, even, you know, I don't know if the conversation has changed with Cisco. I imagine you're in touch with him to understand the continued need and if he surveyed participants and parents in that depth to, to know that you still need that program. So if, I would say if it's needed, let's try to meet it, meet the need.
Yeah, Cisco is still asking us to offer that if we can find the appropriate staffing for it. And I think it's one of those that may or may not go. Last year, Brenna also offered aftercare and hers was free and it filled immediately. And we priced ours to cover the costs of what we would need to provide a snack and an instructor. So ours was less popular, it did not fill, and it did not run. And so I think it'll be interesting to see what happens this summer with those 10, maximum gathering sizes of 10. Brenna is offering half of what she offered last summer. So I don't know if that will push more people to need the aftercare that we're offering or if it will still be not of interest to folks because of, because of the need to pay for it.
Can we cover any of those costs with the funding that we're receiving?
I don't know.
Okay.
Because I think it was a previously budgeted expense. I don't know that it would be eligible for the CARES funding. However, I think if we had to increase it in capacity, like, because we can only have 10 per group where we would normally have 25, let's say, then I think it may be eligible for that. I can run it, I can run the, or ask legal, Chris, about that. If she had, if she thinks that would be an eligible expense based on the document, the draft documentation that we had.
Adding staffing to meet childcare needs?
Yeah. I would assume that something like that may be eligible as an expense through the CARES funding, but I'm not.
This is, Chris, I would presume the same, but we can definitely look at that. It seems like the guidance that, that was issued seemed to support that, but I didn't look at that specific issue, so we can revisit it.
Okay.
Yeah, Amber, I guess I would just keep that in mind, because maybe hiring, you'll need to hire two staff and maybe offer it at no cost this year.
Yeah, so we do have budgeted to offer, to hire two staff for that, Sarah, because we had proposed a one to 10 ratio anyways. So it's budgeted for, and then I think that is more of a the OCC decision about if you're wanting us to offer, offer that at no cost.
Okay.
It's, it's only $6 a day. So we have it really, it's really just built only to cover the instructor costs. But that, that would be a decision I would leave to you all.
Well, yeah, if we're able to cover it otherwise, then we'll figure that out. And then the skateboarding instructor, was that the last one? Aside from the lifeguard?
Yeah, and again, it's just, it's a youth program that we typically offer during the summer. It's usually six weeks, two hours, one day a week. And it's a really just a learn how to use your skateboard and the elements of the skate park and kind of a basic intro how-to for, for kiddos. That was also budgeted for, sorry.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I think we should go ahead and move forward with that program as well, just to offer, offer opportunities.
Yeah, I would agree.
Hi.
And just so you know, we're talking about like very, like, there's about $250 in pay associated with that program. So it's, we're not talking about large expenditures really for either, either one of those.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would move forward with those. And then that lifeguard, do we, now it's out of my head. Because I think there was something addressing or specifically not addressing indoor pool use with the executive orders and public health orders. So I think we, I mean, it sounds like we could punt, you know, a conversation of the question of opening the aquatic center for another month.
Yeah, so I talked to Colleen about that. We could, we could open the facility at a four-person capacity currently, which I really just, I'm sure people would love to go in and utilize it. I don't think that makes sense from a staffing perspective, because we need to staff it two at a time. I am also trying to resolve some of those air handler questions before we reopen that facility and make sure it's operating at the level that it needs to operate at. So the, the conversation that Colleen and I had was that, you know, I'm going to, we're going to say it's closed through the end of June. I'm going to figure out the air handler piece first. And then she said she was amenable to, you know, a variance, so we could operate with eight in the space and make it more, you know, that would obviously make more sense to staff a building for eight as opposed to four swimmers. So I think we need to figure out the air handler piece first. And then, you know, I think we could reopen without that head lifeguard position, but it's not, it's not going to be sustainable once we decide to stay open. I mean, we could get by for a while, but knowing that Judy can't work seven days a week and we need to have supervision in that building, you know, someone to make decisions and be the lead is going to be important. And we're paying those dollars anyways, because that head lifeguard is a guard just like anyone else. So we're, it's just a conversation about filling it with a part-timer versus a full-timer, which I know comes with additional costs. I think, yeah, I think that's a decision that can wait, but probably coming sooner rather than later, because if we do decide to hire, it's, that's a really challenging position to fill. And we had had it advertised for about two months with only one applicant prior to this. So it's, it's not going to be filled overnight and it's going to be challenging.
Can we, I mean, if you're addressing the air handler situation, I imagine that the work being done in there, should we decide to move on that, would probably render the aquatic center closed regardless? So, I mean, do you see, if, if we move on the work for replacing that system, would you have to close down anyway then?
That's a good question, Sarah. I don't, I'll have to have that conversation with Chris, because I'm not sure. I mean, there's probably going to be some downtime to like hook up the new gas line to the existing, you know, equipment, but I don't think, you know, it's not going to be months and months of work. So I think it'll be a short downtime. But I'd have to have that conversation with Chris.
Okay. Very good. We covered it all?
Yeah, I think that's everything. The one, the one question, and I see Miguel is still on the call and I haven't had time to respond to him yet, but just something you guys might want to discuss, and it could probably be offline, is that Miguel was wondering about what's the process for requesting face masks and hand sanitizer, I think, from those bulk orders and kind of who's tracking that and responsible for distribution and I didn't really have an answer to his question because it's not something we've talked about, but something we might want to have an email discussion about who's going to be responsible and who's going to track and who's going to issue and what does that look like?
Yeah, okay. Better coordination with the maintenance Pub Works, because I know different folks are trying to order, but it should all go through the EOC, so we'll come up with a better kind of blast of what we're ordering, when it's anticipated to be delivered and when it arrives.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be helpful. And then, you know, how do you get it when you need it and what does that look like?
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Amber. Thanks for bringing that up, Miguel. I think that's important. We didn't think about that, so.
Well, the other thing, sorry, the other thing too, I just want to mention, because I think the, you know, the, the face coverings, I think we can, I think we should all anticipate to kind of, however we can acquire cloth face coverings and not necessarily rely on the disposable ones. That, that would probably be best. But we will continue to have those available, especially for like law enforcement and those guys who kind of just inherently collect dirt or are exposed in different ways than, you know, office work might be. See, Chris is waiting to make a comment there.
Yeah, the, the only comment I was going to make is probably obvious to everyone that if you're going to issue staff cloth face coverings, you're going to have to provide guidance as to the expectation and protocol for them keeping them clean and such, you know, so that they don't just wear the same one every day without washing.
Can we, can we, okay, I mean, that goes without, I mean, we can do that without, regardless of whether or not we're issuing everybody a face cloth face covering or if we, you know, ask them to supply their own and/or reach out if they're in need of a cloth face covering?
Right, yes. And while I'm on, I just want to note, I posted a comment in the chat about the CARES Act funding availability. And the catch there is if, if it, if the staffing that we were talking about for Rocky's Rock was already budgeted in this year's budget that was in effect as of March twenty-seventh, then you couldn't use it. But if these would be new positions that were made necessary by COVID-nineteen issues, then you could possibly use it for that. So that's the catch.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
So Amber, if we, if you get feedback from Cisco that we potentially would need to increase staffing or resources with that program, then we may be able to allocate some funding to that.
Correct. I think you go forward with that regardless.
Okay, I'll make sure he knows that as well.
Do you agree, Kayla?
Yeah, absolutely. I think so. I think it'll be really needed and I think I personally want to say that I don't know how we could make this work, Chris, but I think being able to offer it at no cost would be helpful because of the, this continuous high unemployment rate that we have right now because of COVID. I mean, we're still up at like fifteen percent unemployment. And so I think, you know, understanding the economic burden that our families have been through and the families that, you know, or the increase in public assistance that we've seen, I would, I would say that offering it at no cost would be an important thing for us. And, and we could utilize potentially that CARES Act funding to supplement the cost of that in Amber's budget.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely possible. What you want to do is you want to make sure however it's documented that you showed, these are unanticipated and new expenses that you're absorbing in the program, not that you don't want to be essentially shifting around budgeted amounts if possible, because then it might appear that you're just trying to make an in-run around the requirement that it not be already budgeted. To the expense, to the extent that COVID-nineteen generates a need for the additional childcare and a gap in affordability for that, then I, I think you can make a good argument that it should be covered by the, the CARES Act funding.
Okay. So Amber, I think it would be beneficial then to reach out to Cisco to understand that need and understand if he feels like, based on events through COVID-nineteen, if offering it at free, at a free level would generate a lot of interest. And if it would, what would be your additional staffing needs aside from the two people that you had planned on hiring?
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure. I haven't really talked to him about what his plans for scholarshiping or reducing fees or collecting fees look like. I would assume he's probably under some kind of a tiered model. So I think rather than just saying it's free, we might want to look at operating under some kind of tiers for, you know. I know, I understand that a lot of families have been impacted, but not everyone has been impacted. So I think if folks can afford to pay, they should. But I, yeah, so I'm happy to have that conversation with him.
Sounds good. I have to hop on a meeting for Recovery real quick for the, the marketing piece of Recovery. At three tomorrow during our elected officials and directors departments updates, I'll give us an update on our potential reopening plan for June first and we can probably talk about tomorrow the appropriate way to request things like sanitizer and face coverings for the public. Sarah, does that sound appropriate? Okay. Cool.
Yep.
Awesome. All right. Does anybody have any other questions or anything before we get off this call? No? All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for your time today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, bye.